It is currently 5:01. I'd like to call this meeting of the Belton Independent District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Connie, do we have any public comments for this special meeting? Next item on our agenda is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the engagement of Thompson and Horton LLP for superintendent search process. Is there a motion to approve the engagement of Thompson and Horton as presented in the packet? Have a motion from Ms. Lee. Is there a second? Mr. Taggart? And all approved, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. And just as a side note, Mr. Chris Flores is not here with us today. He is out of town on business. We will miss him. At this time, we're going to ask David Thompson and Mike Moses to talk to us about the superintendent's search process.
Well, good evening, and thank you, members of the board, for approving our engagement. We're very pleased and honored to be back with you, and we look forward to working with you. We want to report, after we got the oral notice a couple of weeks ago that you wanted to work with us, we promptly posted the opening, and we've already gotten a number of applications and quite a number of inquiries. So we're already in the process of talking to individuals and contacting folks, and obviously we'll continue to work that and refine it as we go forward. But very much appreciate the opportunity to work with you and to be with you tonight. We have several action things that we hope to work through. We hope everyone brought your calendar, either on your phone or in manual form. One of our hopes tonight is that we can lock in some key dates, and as we said last time, this is really just to give some structure and focus to the overall search. If we do need to modify the calendar, of course, during the process of the search, that will always be done as the board needs to do so. But hopefully, we can get a calendar established tonight that'll help us with advertising and communicating. And Mike, why don't we start with that? Do you want to work through the calendar?
Good evening, members. Let me thank you again and add my appreciation to David's for the engagement. We're very pleased and honored to get to work with you, and as David said, we think the prospects for the district are outstanding, and the early indications are from the interest we've seen that I think you're going to have a very outstanding pool of people to consider. I think in our previous meeting, we kind of discussed with you, and I won't beat this up very much, but just kind of what we do. And we have already, as he said, started advertising, texasisd.com, TASA, already have the ad up. We are recruiting, and we are having conversations with people right now about the district. But we do need to kind of move to the timeline. And I had brought a timeline. I'm sure, I probably everybody doesn't have those this time. If you do, that's great. We're probably going to wind up probably needing to review that. One of the things we talked with you about in our proposal was when you wanted to have someone on duty. We kind of worked from, start with the end in mind and work back. And we had looked at a couple of options. One of those was to have someone here, I think, 2022, if Robin was going to stay till then. But kidding, of course. Yes, yeah. We had looked at a proposal that would have someone here February 1st. Today's October the 7th, and that's getting pretty aggressive. Another one would have someone here the Monday after your spring break, which, quite frankly, is probably a little more realistic and a little more comfortable in terms of conducting the search. And if that meets with the board's approval, that's what we would recommend. The reason I say that, too, is in order to have some focus group meetings. And if you recall, we discussed having focus group meetings, and you have in front of you, I think each one of you has a sheet of paper with about nine different categories of individuals on that list. And one of the things we asked you to do is to appoint one person from each of those categories. And if all seven trustees do that, we have 63 names, 63 people to meet with in groups of about 15 to 20 each. So that's kind of job one tonight, not that we're going to get those, but we need the board to start putting names to those categories probably within the next week and get those to Connie. Now Connie tells me she's going to be out of pocket for a few days, so this is kind of a homework assignment, I would say, is we need to get the names to her, both their name and their email address and their phone number. And you might want to call them and say, hey, I'm nominating you to serve on a focus group committee to give input to our consultants regarding our superintendent search and regarding some of the things that we ought to be thinking about in way of a new superintendent. The day David and I are looking at, and keep in mind, you do not need to be present. In fact, we'd rather you not be present. But the day David and I are both looking at now is November the 7th. That's a month from today. That's a Thursday. And one of the things that I think one of the trustees had asked us to consider was having an evening session. So what we were going to propose was that David and I would come in the day, afternoon before, and have a focus group late that afternoon of November 6th, either 5:30 to 7:00 or 6:00 to 7:30. I think I heard that request at our previous session. So what that would probably...
That would be in addition to...
We will do, we do that in addition to the others, so that'll give us an extra group. Actually, what it'll do is make the groups about 15 people each, which is a good-sized number. What we will ask, Connie has a letter of invitation that's already been drafted, and what we ask you to do, or we ask her to do, and we'd probably ask the board president to assist her in this, is don't put all the teachers in one group, don't put all the principals in one group, don't put all the business people in one group, mix everybody up. You get a lot richer conversation if everybody is getting to hear the other person's vantage point. Does that make sense? If we have all the teachers together, we love teachers, but we're not going to, they're not going to hear the vantage point of the parent or the businessperson or the auxiliary employee. So we'd like to get a, and Connie and I have already discussed this, and we'll talk about it some more, but get a good mix of all the people you nominate. David and I meet with those in groups, as I say, of about 15. We have about an hour and a half. If we meet with one group the evening of November 6th, we have another group the next day. I think we start at 8:30, do 8:30 to 10:00, then we have another group from 10:30 to 12:00. If there's any local media, newspaper, TV, radio that wants to meet with us, we meet with them during the noon hour over a sandwich. And then we conduct another focus group that afternoon from 2:00 to 3:30. Then if we meet with the direct reports to the superintendent, the deputy superintendents, assistant superintendents, the direct reports, we meet with them for about an hour that afternoon from 4:00 to 5:00. And then we meet with you and give you a report, give the trustees a report of kind of what we heard during the day, what were the challenges, what were the opportunities. Probably a lot of it won't surprise you, but some of it might. But it'll be, it'll be what we hear, and it'll be feedback to you, so you can take all that into account. We're looking at...
And then we'll get it in writing following...
Yeah. And David and I do take notes, and we, without attribution, but we record everything we hear, and then we have it typed up, and you'll get a copy of that also before you do the interviews with the candidates. But that's our next, that's kind of our next milestone. My suggestion to the board would be, our suggestion would be, try to get those names to Connie by end of the week, next Monday maybe. But I'd say, within a week, you should be able to have your names and get those to her, and then the letters inviting them hopefully can go out next week. Now Connie, if I say something you don't like, you can hit me in the head later. But if we can get those letters out and give people a couple of weeks' notice, because you'd like to, you'd like for them to get it on their calendar and have a chance to attend.
Dr. Moses?
Yes.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to do the meetings on the 7th. Did you say we would have a meeting the night of the 7th?
If you're available, the evening of the 6th. I mean, evening of the 7th. We're going to have, also going to have a focus group. I think it was, when there are requests for an evening, to try, us to try to do one in the evening to get people who might not be able to come during the day. So we were going to try to accommodate that on the evening of the 6th. Dave and I were going to come in that, late that afternoon, meet with people from 6:00 to 7:30, conduct the meetings all day the next day, and then if you're available, those of you that are available, try to meet with you at 6:00 or 5:30, 6:00, whatever time you say.
Okay.
Then we'd meet with you for probably 45 minutes or so, something like that. But that's kind of our next milestone, and I would say for the board, your challenge is get your names, and get your names to Connie, and so we can get those out and get people invited. I believe you'll be happy if we do it this way, because I think that the participation will be greater, and the greater the participation, I think, the better the feedback you get that people were pleased that they had a chance to talk and be heard. David, you want to say something?
Just one comment for Connie and the board president. When everybody turns in your names, it's not going to surprise us if you have a couple of duplicates. And so we do ask the board president and Connie to look at all of the list more holistically, look for any duplicates, and if there are duplicates, give a board member an opportunity to appoint someone else, and particularly have an eye to make sure that all areas of the district are well represented. So make sure that it's a good legitimate cross sample of your community.
So that's kind of gets us, that gets us off and running with the focus groups, and that's a, that's a big piece. On option two, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we were here, that will then make our deadline for applying for this position December 2nd, 2019. That way, the position will then have been open 60 days. And that's a good, that's a good framework to leave the position open for that length of time. And then we, and this is the big, this is a big date, and you need to look at your calendars. And I know Christmas time is a busy time. The holiday season's pretty busy. We're flexible on this, but it's, in order to get where we were trying to go and have you conducting interviews the first week after the holidays, which is the week of January 6th through the 11th, that would be the first round of interviews. In order to do that, we need to have the candidates to be interviewed identified in December. David and I were looking at the possibility of December 16th, and I think that's a Monday evening. And again, I know that's a busy time, and I already, I've already been scolded at home myself a little bit about getting myself conflicted, but I'll have to make it up with a better Christmas present, I guess. But any event, if December the 16th, if that's a date, David, you looking at that on the calendar?
I am.
That's a Monday evening, and then, yeah, that's a Monday evening, and that would, that would be the time we would, we would need quite a bit of your time that evening.
At least three hours, three to four hours.
That's your regular board meeting day.
I don't have it on my calendar.
Don't need, can't do it that day then.
I don't have it on my calendar, but that doesn't mean anything.
We're going to need...
Is it the 16th of December that's a regular board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have it on my calendar, but I believe Jeff has it on his. So we could meet with you all on the 16th, June, regular board meeting now?
No, that's a long meeting. Our meeting will be a long meeting.
At least three hours.
You're going to want to take time to be, that's the night you're going to be looking at names and possibility of portfolios and resumes. That's a pretty big, big event. I hate to do this to you. With the, I'm out of state the week before.
I can do the 17th.
I can do the 17th. Could any, with the 17th work for... Are we hearing?
We're hearing December 17th.
17th?
That's going to be a good one.
Okay. We're marking that down, December the 17th. And as, we will start as early as you want to start, if you want to start at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00. But I would say three, three and a half hours minimum. It will be, there'll be some time you'll want to spend looking at materials and considering, and David and I will actually, obviously, be there for guidance purposes, but we like for you, this is going to be a very important time for you, to see and think about all the inputs you've received from the focus groups and so forth. So whatever time you want to start, you tell us, we'll start it.
Five, five.
Five o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
We've got five o'clock on the 17th. Madam President, members, if you'd let me back up for one minute, too, and ask another question regarding your preferences. David and I, with the focus groups, pose questions, and we may have discussed with you, it's kind of a guided conversation. We try to make sure that everybody gets to talk at least three or four times, probably four or five times, and gets to be heard. You have other members of your community that will not be, obviously, we can't meet with everyone in the community, but you will have people that will say, gee, I'd like to have input. If it meets with your approval and you want this, I've talked with Elizabeth about putting the questions up on your website the day after the focus groups meet. We don't want to preempt the focus groups, but the day after the focus groups meet, put those same questions up on your website and leave them up for a week, and let anybody in the community in the ISD that would like to have access to providing input to those same questions. And that, then if someone says, gee, I wish I would have a chance, you or anyone else on the staff can refer them to the website and say, hey, go to our website, the questions are up, we'd love to hear from you, there's a good chance, there's a good place for you to go and provide us some input right there. Is that helpful? Would you...
I think that's a great idea.
Would you like for us to pursue that?
Yes, sir.
Elizabeth and I had already talked about it, and I thought you might, so I think she's agreed to be helpful to us and to help you get that input as well, and I think it, it'll be well received. Okay, December 17th, we meet with you. Now, on option two, again, I'm not changing anything I didn't pass out to you two weeks ago, but what we had proposed was that the first round of interviews would be January 6th through the 11th. The 6th is a Monday, the 11th is a Saturday. Here's what we, most, most of our districts, not all, usually choose to interview somewhere between five to seven candidates. That will not be a decision that'll be made, but let's just say for the sake of discussion, you interview six. You decide, we're going to, we're going to take the six candidates and bring those people in for interviews. It's better to not interview one on Monday, skip Tuesday, interview two on Wednesday, skip Thursday, interview one on Friday and one on Saturday. It's better to do like 2-2-2, or 3-3, or like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You're going to be, we're going to help prepare you with questions, and on the night of December 17th, when we meet with you, we're going to pass out a battery of questions that you can use in the interviews, or you can throw them away, but I think you'll find them helpful. I think you'll find the questions that we're going to provide to you to be pretty, pretty helpful, but you can modify them, amend them, do whatever you'd like to. But the truth of it is, if you interview someone on Monday and you don't finish the interviews till Saturday, you'll be trying to remember, now, what did this other candidate say when I talked to him Monday and I asked him this question? So trustees, what we recommend is if you can come up with some days that week, preferably consecutive days, when you want to do your interviews, and if you want to do them, they're normally two hours, we recommend two hours. Again, one of the districts we just worked with down in Williamson County, they had, they did three consecutive nights, and I think they started at 5:00, and they did 5:00 to 7:00. Then they took a 30-minute break, had a, had some refreshments and kind of regrouped, and then came back and did 7:30 to 9:30, and did that for three nights in a row. Or if you want a full hour, if you want to say, we'll do 5:00 to 7:00, take a full hour, and then do the other ones 8:00 to 10:00. But once you start the interview process, it's better to go bang, 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 rather than just drag it out. So that's a big week, that's a big, and how critical is this? Well, I think it's the most critical part of the process, because it's where you're going to get a feel, is this person, is this a good match for us? Is this a good fit? And that two-hour period, I think it's important for all seven members to be there. I know that Chris couldn't be here tonight, but, so we probably don't know for sure what his calendar is going to be, but if the rest of you know your calendars and want to talk about that for a minute, that's, that's pretty key about getting, getting some dates down and some times down, because that's, that's a big, big week.
Somebody will think about doing like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, saying we were going to interview six, and then that would be either, like you said, either two per night, or we'd do three per night.
On the 2nd?
Can second. January 6th, 7th, and 8th.
So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
I'm sorry.
She's good for Monday, Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Okay. You guys okay with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? We'll have to reach out to Chris to see what his schedule is like.
Am I hearing, are people trying to get a consensus at 6:00, 7:00, and 8:00?
Yes.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if Chris can do that? Did that, is that what I'm hearing?
That is.
Okay. Now, let me say this, as David always says, if this has to change, it can change, but it's better to go ahead and have something on the counter that you're holding. And if Chris can do it, you'll, you'll be, you'll be happier because, and truth of it is, I'm glad you're doing this in January, because trying to do these interviews in December gets really, really, really complicated. Okay, we've got January 6th, 7th, and 8th down right now for first round of interviews. We don't have to make this decision, but do you have a prefer, do y'all like to start at 5:00? Is that kind of your preferred start time?
Yes.
Because candidates will come when you want them to be here. So 5:00 is what you want to say, we'll do a 5:00 to 7:00? And then would you prefer to have 30 minutes or an hour after the, before you start the second interview?
I think an hour's too long in between interviews.
30 minutes? Okay, we'll do 5:00 to 7:00, and 7:30 to 9:30. You'll have a 30-minute break there. Madam President, here's your challenge. On Wednesday evening, the 8th, when you finish, everybody will need to stay, not go home, get a drink of water, take a break, and then go back in, and that's when you try to move from, say, 6:00 to probably 2:00. The two people you want to have back the following week for a second round of interviews. You say, well, why two? Why not just one? What if, what if you don't make a deal with one? What if one is, there are some problems or issues? Remember, we're going to do, we will have done vetting and background checks, criminal background checks, financial background checks, and so forth are all part of this search as well. David and I, as we told you, have never been embarrassed, and we don't want you to be embarrassed. We don't plan to, for anybody to be embarrassed. We plan for there to be proper vetting all along the way here. But, but that evening, the evening of the 8th, you probably need to stay and say, okay, who are the two we like the best? We're not committing. This is not saying we have to pick one of these two, but who are the two we want to have come back for a second round? That's, again, not, not that we're committing, that saying this is, we have to hire one of these two, but probably if things go well, these are two people we think could really, might, might be able to be our next superintendent. So then we need the next week, which is the week of January 13th through the 18th, we need two evenings. And this is, usually the second interview looks like this. The candidate is usually invited back with their spouse. Usually, a dinner is held, say, 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, whatever you want, and the spouse is in the dinner for about 45 minutes, say, 45 minutes to an hour. And then the spouse is excused, thanked for their time, thanked for their being present. The dinner is strictly conversational.
Casual.
Casual conversation, and you're, you're watching, obviously, social skills, but you're also getting to know the candidate a little further, you're getting to know the spouse, you're getting to know the family commitment to this kind of a professional position. And then once the dinner is completed, the spouse is excused, and then generally, you'll spend another two hours with each of those two candidates, maybe longer. And you say, what questions do we ask? You ask follow-up questions to the, to the questions we will have given you from the week before. You can, you can design some of your own, you can give them hypothetical situations. We'll talk about that further before you get to that point when we meet on December 17th. We'll help, we'll help set that up for you a little, little more completely. But that's, that's again where you're measuring the second round, that second round, is this as good as we thought it was the first time? Is this person still impressing us? Is this still where we want to, we want to put our attention? And then at the end of the second evening, we'll, we'll have a little talk about what has to happen then. But trustees, Madam President, trustees, we need a couple of nights, the week of January 13th through the 18th, that you would like to commit to do the second round, do those second round of interviews.
January 13th, okay. January 13th. The whole week? Are there any days at all during that week? Is that spring break week? Is that what the... No, we're in January. No, we're talking about January 13th through the 18th.
Yes, sir. 13th through the 18th is the second round.
What? Of January?
You don't have to do these on consecutive nights. It works better if you do, but if you...
She's looking at 2021. We're in the same year now.
Okay.
We're just trying to identify what's a...
What I was saying, you don't have to do these on consecutive nights. It's better if you, if you do, but if your calendars won't work before you can, and you need to separate, it's just two, there are just two, so...
Okay. Hold on one second.
Okay.
What did we come up with?
The question is, does it have to be that week, or can it be the beginning of the next week? Does that really mess up the timeline?
We can move it into the next week. If there are commitments, then...
Because Rosie's back.
Then we can, we can move.
So January 20th is a regular board meeting, I'm assuming? So January 21st? January 21st or, and 22nd?
21st and 22nd?
Mm-hmm.
That's a Tuesday and Wednesday night, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, want to be sure.
And that's for the second round of...
That's for the second round. Now, that changes our calendar just a little bit, but I think we can still probably make it work so someone's here by spring break.
Okay.
We're kind of, what we're doing is putting everything back a week, which is okay, because I think it's, if it will accommodate everybody being present, it's more important for all of you to be present than it is for us just to see if we can get this done.
Mm-hmm.
It's be much better, I hope, and I assume we're going to run this by Chris and make sure that he's okay with this. We can probably, after the 22nd, what we currently have scheduled is on the 27th for the board to identify the finalist for the position. And that doesn't have to be done on the 27th, but remember, we have to wait 21 days after you identify a finalist before you can enter into a contract. So what I would, for the purposes of background checks, district visits, final agreements, we'll have the rest of that week after the 22nd to try to conduct that. If the board decides that it wants to do a site visit, we could probably set that up for the last, maybe Friday of that week, or very early the next week. So that is something we don't have to decide right now. In fact, we, we're not able to decide until we, until we get further down the road in the process. But just for thinking ahead purposes, what we had previously had on option two was January 27th to identify the finalist for the position, leave it open 21 days, February 17th, what day is February 17th, David? Is that a Monday?
That is a Monday.
It's a Monday.
And I think that's one of your normal, regular board, it's the third Monday.
That's the day you could actually enter into a contract, and that's a five-minute process. That's not a, in fact, that's a good night for the candidate to be here and be introduced to the community.
Celebrate.
And it's kind of a celebratory time. and it's kind of a celebratory time to be introduced, to be named, and a contract to be finalized. So we're still shooting for that on February seventeenth, and then a month later, March sixteenth, is the Monday after spring break, someone can actually be on duty. That would be what we would be shooting for. So I've got January twenty-first and twenty-second as second round dates, and we're gonna leave those other dates, as you saw on option two, as they are, but we can adjust those later as if we need to. If we say, hey, we've run into a little problem and we need to push that out a little bit, then we can do that. But again, it's just something for us to kinda all shoot for and have something in mind in terms of where we're going. Are we good with the calendar now?
I believe we're good.
Can I ask you a question on the background checks?
Yes, sir.
Any clarification? Did you say that the, all the background checks would be done on the, assuming that we have six as opposed to eight or seven or whatever? Those, those background checks would be done before those interviews?
David and I will have vetted everyone before you interview anyone. Now, as far as a criminal background check, we do a criminal background check on, by law, you have to do that on the person who gets the job.
The district does.
The district does that, but we, we'll assist the district on that. As far as all the others, we will have talked to references, we will have talked to service center directors, university professors, trustees. Here's what we don't do. The person that I think that this board's gonna be interested in is probably someone who is, as I, as we said before, is very, very successful where they are now, and is not advertising the fact that they're looking for another position. So what we don't do is disturb their community. We will go to their previous communities, we will go back to their first employer, second employer, third employer. We'll, we'll talk to people that we know, that David and I know, that they may not know that, that they know we know. It may be their service center director, it may be a neighboring superintendent, it may be a neighboring board member, but we'll satisfy ourselves that these are quality people. If we find out something about a candidate that, that is unflattering, we will tell you. We don't work for the candidates, we work for you. Now, we may ask you to pause for just a minute and stop and think, do you want this to be a disqualifier, or do you want this to be, say, sometimes in the superintendency, you make people unhappy. And we might tell you, this person has had a, had a, had a bump. And do you want that to be a disqualifier? And we've, we've had that, we've had a situation come up where someone, when they were seventeen or eighteen years old, made a pretty bad mistake, but thirty years later, do you want that to be a disqualifier or not? But whatever we, we're aware of, we share with you. You are, you are our client. So, does that help? Okay. I think we've kinda got the calendar, we kinda know we're gonna put this up on, we're gonna put the focus group questions up via technology. David, what else we, you want to talk about in open session that we need to visit about? Our trustees, questions that you may have?
Let's see if they have some.
Does the board have any questions at this time?
Mike, can I make one suggestion?
Dr. Battershall has the question.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
For executive sessions, on the, hold on, the first date that you gave. November the sixth. Yes, should that be posted for an executive session?
That'd be November seventh.
November the seventh.
That's correct.
Can I make a suggestion here? And, and we can work with Angela and your staff on this. We would always post an executive session just in case you need it. And, and the purpose of going into closed session is never to discuss process. Process will be discussed in public. Any closed session discussion will be about specific individuals that, that may have expressed an interest or that we're talking to about the position or that you may be aware of that you want to bring to our attention. So I think, I think the wise thing to do, Mike, is to always post it, and if we need it, we use it, if we don't need it, we won't use it. Now, the, the meeting on December seventeenth will almost entirely be in closed session because that will be specific, a very extensive review and discussion of, of individual candidates.
For the questions on the website, when would you anticipate those being ready to be posted?
Elizabeth has the, Elizabeth has them right now, and she can.
So anytime?
The date, no, the day after the focus groups. Day after focus groups, which would be November the eighth. I'd put them up November eighth, and I'd take them down November fifteenth. And I've mentioned, mentioned that to her, so you, you got those up a week. Robin, I would also, and we'll talk with you or Connie about this. The language, the, we'll, we'll help give you language for the interviews, but all the interviews will be in executive session. The board will need to open, usually if you open about five minutes before, or if you, you can, if you open at five o'clock, your interviews are gonna probably run pretty close to two hours. If the board cares to open at four forty-five, they can, if they don't want to, four fifty-five, whatever. But all of those will need to be in executive session. The candidates will need to be at another, be somewhere awaiting their turn to talk to the board, but we'll talk through all that. We'll talk through all that and kinda get a little assistance from y'all when we set everything up December seventeenth.
One thing, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I mean, if that's related to this, because mine's different.
No, let's move then.
On your, your list of people, what, what is your definition of an auxiliary staff member?
It can be whatever you would like for it to be, but it's what we, what a lot of boards like to do is make sure that someone, paraprofessional, teacher aide, bus driver, food service employee, maintenance worker, someone from that group of employees is, is also represented.
Typically, a non-certified person. Think, think in those terms. Think of, think of folks who are certified, who are required by law to have contracts, and then think of all your other folks that you depend on, who may not be required to hold that certification, but who are also very important to your district.
Okay, and then in regard to student, I'm assuming you want a high school student. Are you wanting, are you, are you thinking that it's more helpful to have students that are highly involved in school in some way, or?
We, we've had, and usually the, the students are usually outstanding. We've had sophomores, juniors, seniors, we've had some more involved than others. We've had some that, again, music students, athletic students. We've had students who are from a wide, just every, every walk of, of the student body that you have.
The one thing I would think about is think of students who are gonna be comfortable in a group of fifteen adults, listening but also expressing opinions on behalf of students who aren't gonna be intimidated. And we try, Mike and I try very hard to keep these processes open, casual, make people feel comfortable. But, but just think of students who are, who are, are gonna feel comfortable in that setting, expressing their thoughts and opinions.
They, normally, when we get through, the, the adult participants are always blown away by the student participants. They're always very complimentary at what they add to the discussion, and they are, in fact, the people that you're trying to serve, so. But whoever, whoever you feel is appropriate, we will make them feel welcome and delighted they're there and try to make sure it's a good experience for them.
I'm presuming that as the board submits their names, they should bear in mind to have a representative sample from the district, i.e. age, gender, race, the, the programs that people represent, that should be a consideration.
Absolutely.
If each person, as we said earlier, if each person, as you make up your list, then we'll look to the board president and, and your staff to kind of holistically look at all to. And again, you're looking for duplicates, but you're also looking for that broad representation.
And if we have folks on this that don't necessarily fall under one of these categories, that, that would be okay, too?
Sure.
Sure.
These are props.
Yeah, these are just, as, as close as you can get to it, I think, gives us a great group, but if you say, I just don't have anybody in that category, I need to get somebody else. And I've already spoken with Connie about, let's, don't have everybody from the same group. You know, from one group come together, let's try to make sure that there's, as David said, broad representation there, but. And the other thing I would say is, we'll give them a time, the letters that, that I've given to Connie, gives everybody, we'll give everybody a time to come. I'm not sure how we're gonna do the, we're, I'm gonna have to rely on y'all a little bit on who the people are that maybe need to come for the afternoon, late afternoon, early evening session. But I'll let y'all, and work with Connie on that. What I was gonna say was that if someone can't come and tells Connie, say, gee, I'd like to come, or tells Robin, gee, I'd like to come, but I just can't make it at that time, don't exclude them. Put them in, put them in. Put them, slot them in another group and let them come when they can. We're not trying to keep people out, we're trying to get people in, so.
So if one group is fourteen and another group is seventeen, we're, we're good.
We're okay.
It's, it's not an issue.
Does that make sense?
And, and we do want to pull the curtain back just a little bit of these, the focus groups. Think of, think of opinion leaders in your community who are reflective of your community, but frankly, also help carry the message and shape opinions in your community. And one thing that we do suggest is purely optional, but when your new superintendent gets here, particularly if he or she comes from outside of the district, we suggest that a good first activity early on in their tenure is to reconvene these same groups and use this as an early, good way to start plugging into your community. And so think of that, think of the process and how these people can help the board and your superintendent be successful and connect with your community.
Other questions?
I believe that about covers it.
One thing we would invite on the evening of the seventh, when we're here, again, at the end of a lot of data collection from the evening before and all day on the seventh, we'll, we'll give you kind of a brief oral report, and then we'll follow up in writing with all of the comments. We would also invite you that evening, as, as you hear priorities from your community. We know the board probably does continuous kind of planning, goal setting, revising of goals, focusing. But if you either, as a board, if y'all have identified any priorities you want to make sure we're aware of, that would be a good evening without adding another day on your calendar to also have some of that conversation.
Okay, so we are meeting with you all on the evening of the seventh. Looking at your timeline, you've got from six to, from four to five, you're gonna be meeting with senior staff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we can move that around.
Yeah, we can move it up, if y'all want to move it up to like five thirty or whatever.
I think y'all said, they said five o'clock's when they wanted to meet. We'll meet at four to four forty-five with them, and we'll, we'll come out at, we'll, we'll, we will be here when you're here. Okay? I always had a, I always had a rule.
Six to seven for that meeting, to meet with them on that same evening? Yes.
You don't have to be there, but if, we, we do offer a, a verbal report to the board that evening. Did I, was, I wrote five down, do we need to change that time, or do you, you need to do something else?
Right here, you've got, on this option two that you gave us a couple of weeks back, you've got six to seven, meet with the board, maybe five thirty?
And we're, we're gonna have that completely retyped now that we've set these dates, and I'm gonna send a fresh copy to Connie tomorrow, probably.
We just want to make sure you had enough time to do all the meetings that you all wanted to do during the day.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll get that done. We'll, we'll, we'll fit it in. If you want to start at five o'clock, we will be ready at five o'clock.
Five, five thirty, six, whatever.
Because I'm gonna redo, we're gonna redo that schedule.
What works, board, five or five thirty on the seventh? Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. We'll redo, we, we'll move everything around, we'll fit it all in, we'll have a session the evening before, and then we'll set that up, and then I'll get a clean schedule to Connie and, and then, I assume then that gets distributed to Robin and all of you.
Yes.
Should have that tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you.
On your, on your letter of engagement, if the board wishes to discuss any of those items with you, can they do that, or?
Are you talking about some of the specific things?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure, I mean, that's.
It's up to you, I think you do an open, I don't think it matters to you. So at this time, if there's nothing further, the board is gonna go into closed session. It is five forty-six to discuss personnel, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, and superintendent search. We will reconvene shortly. Beef event tomorrow, five thirty at Tin Rock Ranch. Y'all have some upcoming events, at six twenty-six, thank you.